Take a look at how the water, the store water, we give you advice on how to drive away.
Yeah, if you just don't want to be that water flow, because then you're blocking your neighbors from either side of the street.
Yeah, my thought was to have Bill Chapman actually dump a little rock over there, but I hesitated on that until I talked to you guys.
Well, Bill Chapman probably won't drop that.
Probably won't drop that any longer, but this is how long I'm going to think about it.
All right.
Hey Doc, I just want to report in, I don't mean your work.
If you wanted zone?
And the other thing was, uh, Crazy Craig helped me a hell of a lot with scraping my eyes off my sidewalk from the end of the market all the way getting out of the block with that ice surround. Because I would have been so busy with the power fracker, probably wouldn't be able to get in.
Those guys, those guys helped out a lot too, so we appreciate it. Anything else?
That's it.
You went over your limit for about a minute. I'm kidding. Josh, you know, I started, I talked to Kit, and I was sort of shocked when I told Kit to say, "I'm not bad at you." It's an eight thirty morning, Elizabeth, it wasn't. And I told Kit, I talked to somebody else besides you, right? And I said, "I want to meet you." We need to talk to Chris. Well, I talked to women first today.
Probably talking to her.
I was courting Chris.
Yeah, very much, first of all. Elizabeth would have been two.
Yeah, but, uh, my water softener, the overage, I was late to buy. And I didn't run up to some kid told, "You're lucky, huh?" He didn't know that. So I got my water, $333.74, and that's minus seventy-five dollars for me using my water pool. So then I get my next one, seventeen hundred, or seven hundred and thirteen dollars. And they explained to me, they, the only check I want from the market, "You got a leak." What I'm down there for is, can't they, how do you detect that I have a leak anywhere? Well, what system do you guys have in place to detect that I have a leak?
We had, we were talking about that last week.
Yeah.
And Stephen brought it up, he wanted to know if our meters were the type you could automatically instantly read as far as.
Were they off their phone or how do they read?
We don't have those bad meters. We have the radio controlled readers that, that our guys go through the city once a month, like on a routine. And they, that's how you get the reading from what it was. So if you had something going on, and I had the same thing happen in my rental apartment, above the office, big thing, my water softener was, that had that, I don't know, we think it, that.
I'm just saying, okay, once, I didn't find a leak and call private security, Tim for them.
Yeah, so you already had one more.
You didn't get it, you didn't get it hit up like two months ago.
So you ended up getting another month after that, and you didn't read it.
I didn't know I was going to have a leak now.
Right. The man, Peter, almost told me.
I mean, can you check it again with the two weeks, make sure that you have found a leak? I mean, I don't care, I don't the pool, I put that reader on and get that filled up full, and my pool's going by now. Yes, I did, you know, I, and I said to Chris, "Yeah, well, forgive me, son, I can pay the, the water bill, the sewer." And he said, "This goes down with water," but I said, "It's a lot of plants that leak everywhere." You know? So I mean, that's something, if I did a leak, I did that one reverse on that pool, then they, you know, then he said, "I don't have a leak, man." That ain't the problem. I say, "There needs to be something done, that this don't happen again." That's, that's a big shock.
Right.
And I, I, my average is seventy to eighty dollars an hour. And I went from eleven thousand one to four to twenty-nine thousand an hour. Now it's running, but I, what I understood from Chris, it's running on the ground, yeah. It doesn't go around the sewer. Yeah, it's clean water. I told you, it's clean water. It's clean water, you know? What's the difference? It's not being treated, there's no, there's no.
But still has to be treated, it still runs through our plant, our plant still has to be treated, regardless.
Regardless, I mean, I.
Once your water gets to the sewer, then it's not clean anymore, that's one thing. So, I understand that.
So these, like, done a one, I've heard the other cities do, like, a one-time forgiveness, you have to pass it or get it.
Yeah, so it's so easy. I just, I don't want this to happen to somebody else, my way to say, I got the wrong kind of act. Eight thirty morning, I'll pass, just like.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah.
It happened to me too.
Yeah, and he told me that.
You had, it's happened to you.
But I, you know, my, my whole life, my background, you know, and I, I didn't mean it, I told you girls, I ain't bad at you.
His, his, I think my second bill was four hundred dollars a month, a lot of water. And like you said, we didn't read it until the last one.
Personally, I still get mine.
So, so my question would be, when we see a high, like halfway through the month, you see that it's high, you send out a notice, wouldn't it be wise to go by?
Yeah.
And then here too, say, "Hey, you're, you're still freaking old."
So, in the first month, his water was a little high, but it wasn't out of the ordinary. So, for instance, when Mike gets to home from, from Harvell's Island, so, so the report didn't flag it the first time, because it wasn't out of the draft, out of the, out of the range. Well, then he went another month, and with it actually running in that, so that second month.
Yeah.
And then the appropriate flag, obviously, because there was a leak.
And what my softener is, if my hair is filled with water, we have, somebody, what I couldn't hear, I thought they heard that shit. Can you identify your echo sign? Now I hear it, I didn't buy that.
So the softener flag goes for us, that's how we find. And it just wasn't, wasn't how they were giving it done for the program to find, which I know, that's the reason it wasn't notified.
My thought is, you go check, just, okay, go a few weeks, you check it again, hey, you still have your water leak, I mean.
You know, we, could we bring it up with the water department and ask them if we have somebody?
Can I interact?
No. No, you can't. Well, just a minute.
All right, I don't own them.
I was just wondering if we, Johnson said, Robert was an idea, what it would take, if we have somebody to flag like you guys, if they could go by the next week and just hit the radio, you know, turn the light on, and check it yourself.
Down the water, it's still off, and you check the leader, it's good, you got a leak, I mean.
Yeah, you know, how you check that water, when you check it, one of the easiest ways to get to it, you're there. My softener, you have to have an LED light, and Crazy Craig's the only one to check it. And then, my eyes are going back to, right? I gotta get my cheerers, I gotta slide in behind my water here, get down like this, that's what I'm standing out, that LED light, I did it. And I think, I got it. Because one day, he's doing laundry, that's twenty-seven hours, oh, he's three hundred minutes.
Yeah, some of them are not like.
That thing's hard to shoot, free, how to set up.
Put them in for years.
You know, the old ones, one of them's going, oh, it's outside, I was gonna take it off, that means read it. That's why I love.
Yeah, we had to ask them to work through all the.
Yeah, I get that, but I'm just saying, I'll read that off there, and he ass.
I think we, I think we can look at, maybe figure it maybe in some way. I mean, the mayor brought up, Wes, I mean, why are you sure we were opening ourselves to something like, you know, a flood, a backup sewer, or we've never paid for that, because, you know? But I think it's something we can look at. Let me talk to Trey Meyer, and I'll talk to some other cities and see how they do it.
I know, I, well, Jeff said something about Bell Plain, that's what brought that up last week, didn't Jeff about Bell Plain forgive it once, or over at U C, or something, like once a year, or something, give you a buy if you had a tremendous big bill on water or something? Did he say they have a forgive Bell Plain or something, they have an ordinance that they let?
They had a policy, a long time, they did a one-time forgiveness to the sewer, they have a long.
One-time, yes. Okay, for the sewer?
Yeah.
For the sewer, right.
Yes. If we, if we did something like that, and we take the sewer part off of their water, it'd be, it'd be almost like, it'd be almost like what we have, when we give them the meter that we take off, for outdoor, we don't charge the sewer for that water, we charge that meter. So, I mean, we could, I think we can, talk to Craig, and we can maybe figure something out. Talk to some other cities, not that it's good for the city, but it could help these people like this, if they don't, they have a bad leak like this, maybe the sewer could be one-time, you know, something like that. But we'll have to do that in council. We have to change the ordinance. Okay, Jackie?
Can I interact?
Yes, you can.
All right, for experience reasons, Joanne was pulling me on the ribeye at the time, and a water cool ice machine. I was working on it, and the water cool, which works out of high pressure on the condenser, and water goes through it, the valve stuck open, she went twenty-two thousand, get on the water, in a week's period, going right down the drain. She got a one-time forgiveness on that water, on that ice machine, on the sewer part, you know, the way I look at my bill, sewer is actually higher than your water bill, if you look at it. At that time, it was equal, it was one-on-one, but she got forgiveness on that twenty-four dollars gallon that went down the drain. Well, those parts in my fault was not catching the water bill. And from my experience, I had a toilet bowl leaking in an absurd bathroom that I didn't use a lot, living alone, and water was going in the tank cup and going down the drain. And I got a call from Julie Smith saying, "Your water bill is a lot higher than the month that it was last month, you might want to check your flapper valve," or something like that. And sure enough, I had to put it in the toilet. But I got forgiveness on that too, for the water going into sewage, but not the water bill.
All right.
So I see the water bill, but the, the overage, when you have water going down the drain, it was just even the last month.
All right. Well, what's, what do you think, Johnson?
I think we can do this.
I have a problem with. And then, maybe, once we visit the guys, John, maybe we can, can we do that, sorry, on the right side? We won't have a, a, right, the city.
I used to only live with.
You know, our water and sewer superintendent, which is, you know, Bob, Trey Meyer, Robert, he can, he can get his input, and then Chris can check around.
I saw it, it's going out to somebody else.
It, it, it could help my revenue too.
Yeah, he's, he's hot.
He's hot.
I mean, he called me, we could go to the building, and we can hear the water.
Anyway, anything else, guys?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Becky, your turn.
Hi, I just have to put together an annual report for the certified local government, and if Doc will sign that, because the mayor is at home, I can get that in. We did put the leave house on the register for.
Becky, I get out, get out of jail tomorrow, so I'll be back at it again, so.
Okay, okay, fine. Then, whatever, I just need it signed, so I can put it in for the annual report. The leave house, I do, had went, was listed on the national register of historic places, and we are also working on trinkets and schools in, in the Wilton and Moscow Township for Muscatine County. So, that, you know, seems to go, go real well, that's Freedom Rock and all of that, that we, we've been doing downtown, the murals, all of that, was part of that downtown strategy that we started a couple of years ago. So, that's all I have for you, and my question.
Sounds good. All right, that brings us to legal items. We have a public hearing. And I'm opening up the public hearing right now. I had deferred nothing to mountain in the budget. Kit, did we have any calls, Chris, new calls, over letters, anybody else? All right. I will close the public meeting. All right, now, the next part, the budget amendment resolution number one, zero, one, 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 two, zero, two, one, is to amend the budget, and this is Chris, or this brings in the transfers and stuff that we have to do according to the odd and weird and stuff.
This was, this was the, well, for instance, it's on the bottom of that budget sheet I gave you guys there.
Right.
So on the revenue side, we have the bond sale, we have that, we have to amend the budget for that. And then on the expenditures, you have a new part, which I forgot to budget for, I mean, we all approved it, I just forgot to put it in the budget, just my brain crap. And then, of course, the funding of the bonds, bonds and payouts for that, you know, even though that's all in and out, it's still going to be amended to the budget. So even though there's no more money for, for the gain, you know, it all has to be recorded and amended. And then the sewer, sewer, last time, the street sewer improvements that we authorized, are going to send the sewer budget over as well, so those are the, those are the expenses that are, and revenues that are in this.
Amendment. Okay. Well, do I have a motion for the budget amendment resolution? Anybody, Sheriff? Is there a second? Second by Wayne? Any more discussions? All right, we have to go with the sure by Wayne? Ted?
Yes.
Yes, Steve?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Budget amendment resolution passed. Correspondents, Kit, do you have anything that really was big in that? Was it?
The letter from the Thompsons.
Oh, yes, we did get a letter from the Thompsons, we had asked the Thompson Foundation about maybe throwing some money in for helping out with the police and, and the community group remodel. They have looked at it, and it said that it does not meet their goals of the foundation. They feel the project should be funded by the city. Everybody got a copy of that?
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Everybody had one in theirs. They also are looking, probably, some of their funds will be looking at, sort of, REIT, you know, the rec center, so that'll be something discussed then. All right, any questions? All right. Is that all the communication, I think, all right, correspondence? Mayor items, we have a contract for you in your packet, if you're on your list, if you looked at, with interim city administrator contract, and that's with the gentleman that we interviewed last time, Jeff Warren. You looked at it, looked it over?
And the mayor and I have been over it a couple times, and Jeff's been over it a couple times doing that, so I think, and I'm not going to speak for Jeff, but I, I know the mayor's been over it, and I've been over it a couple times, and I think we're good on our end.
Mayor, you like it?
Hey, we're good.
You're good? Feel good about you, Jeff?
Good to get, Jeff.
I'm good, I'm appreciative of the opportunity, I look forward to start free.
Okay, any more questions?
My question, going through that, was, I don't know if I meant to during the last meeting, I mean, are we in the process of continuing to look for a city, a full-time city administrator, or is the idea that this is just a trial period to, you know, potentially go into the next phase?
So, so as the mayor and I have talked about, I think, Doc, you were on the, Jeff's station, I don't know who else was on that. I don't know who was on that. The idea would be that it's a six-month contract with Jeff, and then after four months, you would basically do an evaluation at that time, and sort of what you wanted to do, you could extend Jeff's contract for an additional period of time, or you could name him as the city administrator, or you could go look for, you go on market and find another.
That's the only question I have, but.
So give the council a lot of time to go.
Our intention is to move ahead with Jeff, the next six months is going to be the trial period, we'll all be looking at each other at that point, and we'll make a decision.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if everything worked out, I would say Wayne, yeah, looked good, and we were running smooth, I would say Jeff would probably be offered the.
I guess it wasn't sure if it was an interim position, because he only wanted to work the six months, and we were still in the process of looking, or if this was just a probationary evaluation.
One thing, and I don't want to speak for Jeff, but I think it's like, Doc was in the two there, I think the trial period would be by both sides.
You know, he can say, "I don't like this guy's," you know? Look at this one, that's new. All right, if not, I would make a, or entertain a motion to accept this interim contract with Jeff Warren and us. Moved by Ted?
Seconded.
Seconded by Steve? All in favor, let's see, let's go with Sheriff? Steve?
Yes.
Myself, yes? Ted?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
All right, welcome aboard, Jeff.
Thank you, look forward to it.
All right.
Done deal.
How am I doing, Mayor, am I doing okay?
You're doing pretty good, you know, it's kind of night, having a night off, and, you know, one of these things, but.
All right, next thing we have is a, and David talked to us about this when we met with the public safety, we met with him, and we were talking about officers and everything else, but we have a resignation letter from Mike Schmidt, who got promoted, up to the administrative part of this, of the Muscatine Sheriff's Department. And so he has given a letter of resignation, or he was our main part-time officer, of course, and so we're going to have to accept that, I would say with regrets if we make that motion, but he did a heck of a job, and Dave can tell you, if we hadn't had Mike, we would have been.
Been bitrowed, very, very big shit.
Like, like, like the chief just said, we've got big shoes to fill with Mike being resigning, but anyway, we should luck and endeavor as far as in administration of the county sheriff's department, the mayor would say. And the mayor, what would you like to say?
Oh, I'm just saying that, you know, Mike was, for thirty years, he was our backup. He was the person that was there for us, so, you know, we're going to miss him, we appreciate all the work he's done.
I, I, I'll second that, hundred percent. Okay, so, we need a motion to accept this red, letter of resignation.
So moved with regret.
So moved with regret by Wayne, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Steve?
Mr. Gray.
All right, Sheriff?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Myself, yes? Ted?
Yes.
And Wayne?
Yep.
All right. Now we have council items. I have nothing that's sitting in underneath there. Does anybody got something to bring up about council? Katie, want to speak?
I was going to have to speak on her, but I'm like, oh, my church, okay, that's all I wondered.
No, we just had her come down to see how we work.
Okay, we were going to put her.
It's funny, two machines.
What's the space in library, is it open now? Is the library open? Yes, they're starting to loosen a lot of things up, and so. I've had a couple people ask me what's happening.
I, I don't know for sure, because I haven't talked to Sharon recently, but they were doing a, a call-in, and I think last I knew you could do an appointment, so they want you to call ahead to restrict how many people are in the area.
They haven't changed that yet?
No.
So they're boosting things up, Ralph?
I think, I think they still want you to call just to make sure that you have a place, you know what I mean? Kind of like our city hall, we want you to call just to make sure.
I kind of intend to, but if the school's open with how 1,400 kids across the street, or however many, we surely can have a library open. Yeah, I think what's happening is the after-school stuff, there, you know, there's no place for them to go. So, it seems like then you ration back, so I don't know if there's a plan or a lot to bring up for.
Testing rate is still pretty high. Well, while the kids are less susceptible to the disease, the older people are not, you know, much bigger mix of that at the library, with the old and young, young at the school. So, I'll, I'll, Doc, just.
The situation is the same, that's what I'm really, I mean.
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll answer that.
That'd be a good idea, all right. Nothing else? That'd be a good idea. All right, nothing else?
I was going to ask you about snow removal, but didn't we discuss having actually no cars from states during snow removal? What, whatever happened to that?
Yeah, Dave, I was talking about that the other day, I got sidetracked and forgot about it. Dave, do you remember what we came up with there?
Yeah, if a city, if a, and a snow emergency is declared by you outside of one of the city downtown city limits, we put signs up, you have to declare a snow emergency if we have, if we're abundant and they're going to come out with snow. Maybe cars have to be off the road for a twenty four hour period during snow removal, but that has to be declared by you.
I think neither the mayor, if I remember that.
I didn't see that on that thing you sent out about snow removal.
Yeah, I didn't.
We talked about it, but I thought we were going to do a trial and shoot.
So what we had kind of planned on. Yeah, we kind of had a plan this year that we were going to, this would be the educational year, we were going to be sliding and telling, be worded, be talking, you know, going out with a copy of that, of that amendment to here. And go, here it is, here it is. But we, but we've only had one, we've only had one significant snow and everyone wasn't prepared for it, so we got the rest of them. We got a lot left to go.
I thought we did too, that's why I thought, I better.
So, yeah, we just forgot.
I moved my car to the park for it with Barry for two weeks.
Yeah.
That being said, if we do do the ordinance, we're going to have to clean off various licensed parks down to have extra places for people to park their cars.
Yeah, I hope.
And it's going to be, it's going to be a learning thing.
Yeah, yes.
This is going to be an educational year. We're going to go around with ordinance and go, all right, please move it, here it is, and give them a copy of it. We'll, we'll make sure, you know, all Facebook followers are, are very aware of it. It's going to take a good year or two before people start to know what's happening.
Yeah, it's not something we can just write down and say it's going to work that way.
We actually don't more in front of the council. Because when people complain, then we play at the house and they're all done.
Okay, anything else, council? All right, we've got bills. Anybody have any questions on any of the bills that we had in your packet?
Small, who's better?
Yeah. Well, I had to sign all the checks when I go. I still got my hand is. I know why the mayor has a stamp now.
No check made out of me, right?
There was two of them that I tore them up. All right, any motion to pay the bills, please? So moved by Sheriff? Seconded by Steve? Any more discussion? If not, Wayne?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Steve?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
And you guys can sign, who is supposed to sign now, Steve? We come down to administering items. Chris?
Okay, I, I didn't have a lot for tonight, but Jamie Ship was here and she's already the community senate, senate director. So I wanted to give her a care, say hi if you have a question.
Hi, he pretty much knows me, but I want to thank her and the rest of you for having some confidence in me. I'm really looking forward to it. I've been with that community center since the doors opened. I have not done the contact part of it, people, you with the people, but the cars, the building, and the bar, and the kitchen. Um, I've not taken care of that stuff for, I was trying to think of how long has it been open, like maybe eight years or so. Um, I'm always open to any kind of suggestions, comments, you could have done this or you should have done that.
You get those.
I know that we, Kit said we were going to give you some money to spend for like, more like, like, bring your, have to be vertically on table. And so I don't know, I have a certain group. Do I look like a certain group?
You have, you have a community committee. There's, meetings head are on it from the city. And then there's about three or four other community members on it, Marcy, Black, and Newborn, Jeff Rings. Uh, I might be missing one of those, but that's, that's the community board. And I've been president of it almost since it started, so. We do not have a lot of meetings unless we've got a problem. But if you want to call a meeting and introduce and get everybody introduced, that probably not be a bad idea.
Well, that's what I was kind of thinking, that there would be some time, and maybe it could be at the community center.
Sure.
Do you have a few things?
My question, are you set up yet with phone and things you need to?
Actually, I've already been going there, you know, a couple of days a week, and Fisher gave me the date book. So I've been trying to just go little by little, and haven't been very far, but recalling the people that he has in that book with the phone numbers to make sure, you know, they still want that thing, and introducing myself.
Right.
As the new director, and that even if their event is in August or November, they can feel pretty calm. So I've been, I've been trying to do that, you know, two or three people at a time. So, and I've had people calling, their people, their name is still on the list, and we have their process.
So we, we have a, we already set a budget, and Kit can print that out for you, just off at city hall, we can print that out for you. And it shows how much you can spend from the different areas you were talking about. And you can, we can send it to my office and I can go over that with you, so we know what kind of talk we're talking about there.
As part of the contract, I can do a meeting record, you know, for our bank year in April.
Okay, yeah. No, I think that would be awesome. That would be great, I mean, it would be nice to have to do a scenario so that.
Are you taking calls on your cell or?
On the cell phone, mostly they call the phone.
Was that Marshall's phone number?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I think it's going to be a very busy year because a lot of.
I think a lot.
I know that my daughter, Daisy, could tell you that was that Barnabas Hill, they made their books through the middle of the year. So yeah, if you want to, if you want to call a little meeting.
Doc, Doc, I, I, Kit, Kit, myself and Doc, they're sent to me. I think it don't happen very often, I mean, your interaction mostly with the city administrator.
When we first started, we were doing it once a month, and then we found out, once we got somebody that was knowing what they were doing and running. They said, why do we have to have all these meetings and they're running? Don't, I guess, so.
Well, there's just like, like that pressure that we got, I would just like, just somebody else's input also in what we need whoever does.
Well, we can stop, something you can do, Doc, sometime, and figure out what days work out, and we can carry contact the rest of the people. The next two or three weeks, maybe we can get a meeting going so we can introduce you and, and do all that. What do you think, Ted? Is that a good idea? Is that okay, Jamie?
Yeah, sounds great to me, so.
If you, or I can call you, give you your phone, your cell phone, something like that, I can, I can just phone you over.
Yeah, I get off at two in the afternoon, I'm done. I've been there long enough, I've got plenty of vacation and PTO times, I'm not worried about, you know, that either, huh?
Union.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm not, sorry.
All right, all right, anymore? Give me that number sometime, I'll get something set up in the next couple of weeks or so.
I will, I'll send it to you.
Okay, sounds good.
Have Joel send it to you. Well, thank you, everybody.
Like, like your husband don't want a phone.
Thank you, everyone.
Chris, anything more?
I, um, no, not, no, not really, I mean, I was just going to talk a little bit about snow removal and, you know, without the ordinance, I was going to mention that, but thanks for Cheryl for bringing that up. Without the ordinance, most people move their cars and it works very well. And I was just going to mention that one of the things we did was, since it was around holiday time, we decided that we moved enough snow downtown that we weren't going to do the emergency downtown. Well, for a couple of reasons. One, because we have a little snow move, but the other one was basically say overtime on that, because we're going to have to pay them a bunch of, we have to, we have to anyway. And then we would have other ways of moving on doing that. So we just kind of did it for the shift as best we could, so. I was just going to mention, so if you got some complaints about the downtown, we were just trying to make a good effort not to incur any more over that.
The only complaints I had was that a lot of times it was pushed in the prime parking or somebody else's prime parking if somebody else was not, like, you're kind of, you know.
But when some of the cars spilled downtown, we followed where we could, where it was most to be, something like this.
I mean, coming down Fourth Street, there was two cars parked there, but I don't know if it's between El and Dejado. And they swung up around it and that car can't really get out because you have to dig yourself out of town for the ice. So it's, it's sort of that traffic going because you're going out about a car to get through.
We went out, moved a bunch of cars as well, to try to help. If the guy said it was a pileup or if there were cars in the way, you know, we had guys out moving them. For the most part, people were pretty receptive and they got them all the way.
Okay, anything more?
No, no, that's it.
How about your going away party that you were buying and all of those stuff?
We talked about that today, and I said, well, we probably have to wait until COVID is over, I mean, I'm not. I'm still going to, I'm still going to be here for, for the spring, so.
If you're here, then you're buying.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, Mayor?
Yeah, I'll buy, I'm going to follow that.
He's buying, right? We're going to have a party for Chrissy's buying?
Okay.
Ain't no problem with that.
You just said, let it be so.
Our board is the.
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday, I don't know when the.
So you're, what's the answer?
And what time is that? Six o'clock, okay.
So they came, why?
We'll make every attempt to make it, but vice handles.
No, you're going to take money out of it.
I got it, I understand, okay.
Anything else?
This certainly was not a record.
You remember time, but anyway, is this table? Well, it could happen to me.
No, it's not table. What we're doing is we're going to, we're going to discuss it and decide how, what we're going to do with it. We're going to check with the water department.
We can't take any action on it tonight.
All right. It's not on the agenda, so we couldn't vote on it anyway. What we're going to do is, we're going to get something figured out. We're going to try to figure something.
Well, since I got my hours, I'm going to try to be here every meeting, so.
Well, good, because the mayor's never going to beat my record.
We hate setting precedents.
What?
We hate to set a precedent.
Hate to set precedent?
Yep.
We know that. All right, anything else? Kids over there wanting to? I enjoy meeting. Before Jeff gets on the air.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff, and thanks, Mayor. Becky?
Seven to seven.